Welcome, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order. And we'll read the land acknowledgement if Councilmember Jordan agreed it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of La Chine. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
I think you, Councilmember Jordan. City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey.
Here.
And Mayor Jordan, Mayor Tiedemann is absent today.
There was no closed session today, so we'll move on to ceremonial matters today. We have a proclamation for American Red Cross Month, and Councilmember Lopez will be reading that.
Cindy in the audience.
In recognition of the American Red Cross Month, March 2023, whereas the American Red Cross was founded in May 1881 by Clara Barton, and this year marks the 142nd anniversary of the Red Cross, and whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters, and whereas people have counted on the Red Cross for the information and skill, they need to be safe at home, at work, at school, and at play, training people in lifesaving skills in CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety. And whereas over 1,500 volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 239 disaster operations in 2022, received nearly 31,000 blood donations and 1,258 blood drives from citizens across Alameda County, and trained 2,975 people in aquatics and water safety. And whereas the American Red Cross installs 690 smoke alarms, trained 9,659 citizens in first aid, CPR, and AED, and through the Pillowcase Project and Home Fires Campaign, 1,391 local individuals and families received fire prevention training and supplies and responded to 583 members of the Armed Forces. And whereas for over 100 years, the United States Presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross in its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Albany and encourage all of our community members to reach out and support its humanitarian mission.
I know how long these meetings go, and since you actually just gave most of my speech, I'm going to keep this really, really short. So I just want to say thank you to the City of Albany for being really an incredible partner with the Red Cross, because we can't do this work without the city and the city's support. And specifically in Albany, we work very closely with the emergency management team, with the leadership, all of you, as well as the Albany Unified School District. So we all work together to try and educate the citizenry and the residents, but also to use schools and community centers as shelters. So during this past January, with the winter floods, we opened two shelters in Alameda County, with supported evacuation and recovery all over the state. And we can't do that without the support of the cities and the residents. So thank you so much for everything that you do with us to make our work possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick and Peggy?
In honor of March 2023, as the 21st Annual March for Meals Month, whereas on March 22, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raised awareness about escalating problems of senior hunger in America. And whereas in 2023, observance of the March for Meals celebrated its 21 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Albany Meals on Wheels, a program provided home-delivered meals, has served our community admirably for 38 years in the City of Albany. And whereas Volunteers for Albany Meals on Wheels, a program serving Albany, California, are the backbone of a program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors, individuals with disabilities, who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concerns and attention to their welfare. And whereas Albany Meals on Wheels, a program serving Albany, California, providing nutritious meals to seniors that helps them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Albany Meals on Wheels, a program serving Albany, California, providing a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas Albany Meals on Wheels, a program serving Albany, California, deserves recognition for the contribution it has made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim March 2023 as the 21st Annual March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of an involvement in the National 2023 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. I'm Peggy McQuaid, an Albany resident, and I want to thank you for recognizing the Meals on Wheels program tonight. Meals on Wheels is an important part of the city's commitment to inclusivity and uplifting diversity. I've been delivering meals for about two years, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share with you a little bit about this vital program. So what does Meals on Wheels really do? It ensures that an interesting variety of easily-prepared food is delivered to participants up to three times a week. One of the people I deliver to tells me she wouldn't have any food if not for Meals on Wheels. Now, while I'm not sure this is completely true, it's an indication of how important this program is. It can fill a temporary need, such as during a medical event, or it can provide long-term assistance. Meals on Wheels builds relationship between the participants and the volunteers. One of my favorite days was sitting on the patio in the sun with a senior and his sons talking about old-time New York baseball. He also shared wonderful stories of his time in Italy after World War II. One of the people on my route is an excellent gardener, and we often spend time talking about her garden, especially her roses, and sometimes I get to take one home, with her permission, by the way. And I often receive little gifts, either for the holidays or for no special reason. Just today, I received some very special homemade cookies to celebrate the Jewish holiday of Purim. It's so important the giving and the sharing goes both ways, acknowledging the human desire to give to others regardless of age or circumstance. Meals on Wheels connects participants with other city and regional services. The volunteer may be the first or only eyes on an individual to alert other city staff that more comprehensive services may be needed. I've been able to share information about the Paratransit Program, the Laundry Program, and the Shower Program with our participants. And I want to give a special shout-out to Keenan, Stephanie, and all of the senior center staff and volunteers for the work they put into this program and all the assistance they give our senior community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick Peterson, and I'm also a volunteer with Meals on Wheels. And I just wanted to say that, you know, as a recent retiree, now I guess I am a senior, have to accept that. The Senior Center provides all sorts of wonderful services, of course, which Meals on Wheels is one. And it's been very satisfying to be able to be part of my community and to go around and meet members of the community I normally wouldn't, who are either homebound or unable to be out and even come to the Senior Center. So this is a very valuable program, and I actually wish more people would take advantage of it, because I think there are probably more people out there, so it'd be nice to do maybe a little more outreach. But anyway, thank you for this proclamation. This is a very important program, and it's part of what makes Albany such a great community. Thank you.
Thank you. I could ask Councilmember Hanson Romero to present the Women's History Month.
We have Sunny and Sophia from Albany High School Feminist Club here to accept this proclamation. Put on my glasses first, sorry. So in honor of Women's History Month and International Women's Day, whereas by Congress, gosh, I knew I was going to do this, I told you that. Congressional resolution, March was designated as Women's History Month in 1987, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic, I can't talk today, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, including women's suffrage, abolition of slavery, and industrial labor, the civil rights, the peace and anti-war, and the Me Too movements. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military and law enforcement. And whereas American women have served as role models and leaders in the field of sports and athletics. And whereas American women have served as political leaders in local, state, federal offices. And whereas in Albany, played a prominent role in our history, leading the movement for independence from Berkeley and incorporation, continuing to serve as elected officials on both City Council and Board of Education, providing countless hours of volunteer service and serving in professional roles. Now therefore, the City of Albany Council does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month and Wednesday, March 8, 2023, as International Women's Day in the City of Albany.
Hello. We are pleased to be here on behalf of the Feminist Club at Albany High School. Thank you for including us in the recognition of Women's History Month. The Feminist Club studies history and current events and works to inspire activism across our community and the world.
While Women's History Month is about remembrance, it is imperative that we prioritize the ongoing fight for equity for all women. Justice does not come to those who are complacent, so we must continue to act. We must not forget the women that got us here, and we must uplift the women today that will help us arrive at our future tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, do we, sorry, City Clerk, do we normally take public comment at this point? So I would offer anyone in the audience or online have any public comment?
Good evening, Councilmembers and city staff. I'm really happy to hear that American Red Cross is here tonight. Basically, American Red Cross certifies people to save lives, and that's one reason why I'm here. Back in last year, September 25, 2022, I became an American Red Cross certified AED, CPR, and first aid instructor. I did that on September 25. It was something to make myself a little bit better of a citizen. During my outreach with unhoused individuals, between now and when I was certified, I've actually saved four people's lives with my skills, administering nasal Narcan. So it's really important that people are trained. I'm not sure how the City of Albany encourages and supports citizens and residents to actually get certified and trained, but I'm here to pass this to you guys. I was going to give you each one, but I gave it to Anne. She could take one, pass it down, kind of thing. That's my certificate from the American Red Cross. So if anybody in the City of Albany wants to be CPR-trained, AED, or certified, I'm willing to do it for free. The Red Cross actually requires $30 from me to certify somebody. So if someone wants to pay the $30, I'm willing to do it at cost. It's not about the money. It's about teaching people the skills of saving lives. And with my one minute left, I can actually certify people with Narcan. So this is nasal Narcan. And then also, this is other Narcan, where you kind of just give someone a shot, kind of thing. But, so if anybody wants to be trained, I could certify them with nasal Narcan and amongst many other things. And also, the Alameda County Health Department is doing free online classes to teach people nasal Narcan. You can get certified. So Alameda County Health Department's doing that for free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to thank the students from the high school on their comments about Women's History Month and International Women's Day. I really love the way that they pointed out that there's still a lot of work to be done and that we need to honor the people who've done the work and also support and lift up the people who will be doing the work. I just, I thought, I loved the way they expressed that. I also want to add it on to what Jeremiah said. It's something I was going to bring up with the city that I think that there should be citywide opportunities to do Narcan training. So I thought maybe by linking up with the library. So I'm just adding that on since Jeremiah brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from councilmembers? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not your turn right now. You're doing for good of the city. That's later. We're on the proclamation.
Any comments from councilmembers on the proclamations?
I'll just thank Red Cross for their work and Meals on Wheels. I'm fond of the program. I haven't taken part in either way in it, but my father rode Meals on Wheels towards the end of his life and was very rewarding for him as a driver. So certainly encourage people to volunteer. And I also thank the students for your work and for coming here and commenting. I know it can be nerve-wracking, but thank you very much.
Hi, yes, I just want to thank everybody for all of the services that they help provide our community. And I thank you for your information on Alameda County, the Narcan training. And thank Meals on Wheels, because I've spent some time with the seniors, and I know it's a really important program for them, as well as the students. I'm Albany High alumni myself, so I'm really very proud and thankful for you guys and the work that you're doing, so.
See, no further comment. Thank you, everyone. I think we'll move on now to the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you for chairing the meeting tonight. Let's see, we have a few things that Anne will also display on the screen as I go, so bear with us as we toggle. I'm pleased to announce that our dog park and lawns have reopened after some of our winter weather enclosures for grass to grow back. This includes the dog park at Memorial Park and the lawns at Memorial and Terrace Parks. During the winter closure, we had our landscape contractor refresh the areas, including overseeding, aerating, and applying compost, as well as to the ballpark fields at Memorial Park and Ocean View Parks. We're hoping that this helps our grass live a little longer and a little healthier as well. So I was pleased to see these reopen for the public's use. As a reminder, these are funded through Measure M Parcel Tax, which is detailed on our website, including the spending and accounting for those funds. As mentioned at my last City Manager's Report, we had a mailing of the recreation catalog that houses all of our upcoming opportunities for the next several months. And camp registration started today. With a very popular turnout, we had over 300 individuals signing up for camps and programs. So thank you for supporting the city and for contributing to that community enrichment. Also, as reported during my last meeting, the Police Department, as well as a number of staff from different departments, attended and hosted a Coffee with the Cops in coordination with the Solano Avenue Association, and also staff and police officers from Berkeley Police Department. It was a great turnout. We had approximately 20 businesses attending, and it was held on Solano Avenue to serve directly to our businesses. We intend to have another event in the near future as well, with the weather hopefully turning better soon. And tagging along with that, the Window and Door Repair Grant Program is up and running. We have contacted all businesses that were affected by either vandalism, window damage, or door damage for this grant opportunity. Hopefully, it helps ease some of the challenges in the repair process and provides a bit of relief to our businesses. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions from council on the City Manager's Report? Any public comment on the City Manager's Report? Okay. Thank you, City Manager. We'll move on now to Good of the City public comment. For persons desiring to address the City Council on items, on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that the city policy limits each speaker up to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comments or to a future agenda item.
First one, I apologize for my earlier hastiness to jump in, missed the line. So thank you, and also want to say good evening to you all. And like the other times that I was here, it's unfortunately not on something that would make us all feel proud. But I'd like to pay tribute this evening to the memory of the four magnificent horses who died at Golden Gate Field in 2023, just the last couple of months, due to the lack of respect for life and cruelty of horse gambling. I want to name them, but I'm embarrassed to use the names that the owners give these horses, horses, kind of absurd names, but I have no other choice. On January 7, Top Union, age 3, died from terrible painful colic. It's an awful disease, which is preventable if given appropriate food and is treatable if detected early, but usually they're not and they die. January 14, Emma's Dance, cause of this pending, but most likely euthanized because of a breakage during racing, which is the result of training the horses around age 1 and racing them at age 2. February 22, Big Laugh, age 2, from colic, again the same terribly painful disease. March 3, Ultimate Diva, who had won the race, but after passing, after crossing through the finish line, tripped and broke at least one leg. The report has been changing. First, they said she was euthanized, then they said she was banned off, then again they said she was euthanized, so I'm not quite sure what is the truth of these reports. This list will get longer and longer, and horse racing and gambling industry will become more emboldened if the cities of Albany and Berkeley do not stand up to Golden Gate Field's trampling on our laws and our rights. I urge you all to use the applicable penal codes, municipalities, police power, or referendums to issue an ordinance against Golden Gate Field. This industry and California Horse Racing Board will surely raise the specter of, let me finish my sentence, preemption laws. But the only way to clear the best, the East Bay of this shameful president is to lead the way. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Margie Marks. At the last council meeting, I interpreted what one of you said, that we have to think of new, perhaps novel ways of tackling issues in our city. We need to think outside of the box. I'm asking you tonight to consider one of the new, novel ways. Governor Newsom signed the Public Banking Act in 2019. This bill gives regulatory framework for cities to establish public banks. Right now, there is a cooperative venture between the cities of Berkeley, Oakland, Richmond, and Alameda County that will open a public bank by the end of 2024 or early 2025. What does a public bank do? This bank is not for individual citizens, but rather governments. A public bank would bring public funds under transparent local control and align how we spend our tax and fee dollars with the values and needs of Albany. We would divest from Wall Street with private shareholders and reinvest profits back into our community. The bank takes money from governments in the region because it is a public entity rather than a completely profit-driven corporation. It is in a position to both save money and make money for its depositors. The state of North Dakota has had a public bank for more than a century. That state fared better than any other state in the country during the 2008 recession and has returned more than $1 billion in profits to the state general fund. One question about the North Dakota Public Bank was, isn't this socialism? The response from the farmers of North Dakota was, we are not socialist, we are pragmatist, and we embrace whatever will actually improve conditions for the farm economy. An organization called Friends of the Public Bank East Bay has published a 50-page Public Bank East Bay Viability Study. After that study, the city of Richmond voted, council voted unanimously to go forward. I can hear some of you say, Albany's too small, the city doesn't have the bandwidth, wait and see what happens in Berkeley, Oakland, and Richmond. I would hope that one of you at least would see the value for the city and put the item on the council agenda to evaluate in some way. The council could give this item to RISE with a deadline of perhaps six months to study the issue and come up with a recommendation to the city council. The councillor, RISE, could have a listening session with the member of Friends of East Bay Bank and someone from the banking world. Give them each 10 minutes, then open it up for public discussion. A speaker from the North Dakota Public Bank could speak about the good, bad, and ugly. Public Bank of the East Bay is going to open in '24 or '25. I would ask the city to make a good faith effort to see if this is a right fit for Albany. Just doing a study, and if it was done by RISE, then it, you know, doesn't involve the city council, just to evaluate it. If we, the city could do that, I think it would be a really positive, great thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
No, you're first.
Good evening, city council. Jeremiah Garrett-Pinguella here. I'll start off with actually mentioning something about the Albany Dog Park. I have a little puppy, and I've been using the dog park. She's all vaccinated, got her shots and everything, so she can go out to the dog park. A few things I noticed, just some positive suggestions. Number one, maybe a drinking fountain for dogs. I noticed someone else brings water. I don't know how that all works, but I think there's a lot of members in the community that are, you know, dog people. And so I think a drinking fountain for dogs would be great, maybe a hybrid for people. I've seen the one to where there's a drinking fountain and a, and a dog, the same one. I'm also a trash can. I notice some people are kind of just maybe throwing the bag up and over the fence to the trash can on the other side of the fence, but I think it'd be great if there's a trash can inside there. That way, you know, if your dog goes to the bathroom, you could throw it away. Maybe some bags could be provided. I know there's bags everywhere, but maybe some bags. Also, I noticed, I was trying to leave, and there's, there's only one gate, or one, I mean, there's two, but, so, I don't know how to describe this, but a two-way gate, kind of like an airlock. So there's two gates, so that way, like a two-door gate. So that way, if you open one, your dog can't run out. Because I noticed there's a lot of people, you know, wait, wait, hold on, I gotta time it just right, you know, I don't want to let my dog out, right? So those are just three suggestions, a drinking fountain, a trash can, and just some sort of like an airlock sort of gate. I don't know how to describe it better than the airlock. Just some positive suggestions I noticed. Okay, only with a minute left. Elaine's Love Laundry and Food Program on Solano, the months of January and February, 84 loads of laundry were washed and dried for people who needed to wash and dry their clothes. Over 1,000 community members served with over 3,000 pounds of food. Food rescued, distributed, thanks to Berkeley Food Network for donating the food. Also, 7-Eleven for donating the pizzas. Every Thursday, there's always middle school volunteers that show up. There's about 50 middle school volunteers, or not volunteers, but middle school students that show up to get pizza and food resources. There's a lot of regulars. So thanks to the Albany Middle School Volunteers. And it's Thursdays, 2 to 4, Solano and Talbot, and also, that's actually, that's actually it. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jeremiah, could I ask a clarifying question real quick? You mentioned drinking fountain and trash cans at a dog park. Which park in particular?
The dog park.
Sorry, the memorial, the one at Memorial Park?
Yes, the dog park at Memorial Park.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hey, just, I just have two quick questions, comments. One is that I support Margie Marks' suggestion that you take a look at the Cooperative Bank. I think it's a great idea, and I hope that you will at least take a look at it. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I've been trying to draw attention to some flooding on Washington Avenue and left a few messages for Public Works. And Allison Corillo from Public Works called me back today and was very informative, very friendly, really clarified a lot of my questions and spent time talking with me. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for Public Works and for Allison in particular. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
If I could pursue a follow-up. My recollection, which may be incorrect, is that when Section B was turned into an official dog park, that there were some improvements that were gonna sort of make it an official dog park. I don't, I think that might have included water, but I don't know if you can talk to that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Hurley. I'm the Public Works Director. And yes, you are correct. We do have some improvements planned for the dog park. And these are part of the Prop 68 grant-funded projects at the parks, and these were identified in the Parks, recently completed Parks Master Plan. While the scope isn't 100%, but we are looking at switching the gates, having the airlock. That's exactly how I describe it. So we are looking into a water line. Water, water's a little tricky out there because there's not potable water right in that area. So that'll be somewhat of a cost issue of where can we get it to bring it in efficiently. And then we're looking at, at things like trash ba, trash cans, as well as doggy bag dispensers, so.
Thanks. Do you have any timing comments on that? I know that's always challenging.
No, so one of our challenges, we are, with this fiscal year, we did get a new position for a small projects, projects manager, and we're going out to advertising for that position, as well as we're looking at trying to get consultants on to get some of these projects that are a little more baked, often moving, and that, that involves both the lighting project, pickleball, some of the things that our community is absolutely wanting, and we want to move forward on. So they're in the works, but I don't have a timeline right now.
Thank you. And I know people will be excited about pickleball. I've heard a lot about that door-to-door.
And then I had a follow-up question for, maybe for the city manager. Has Albany ever considered joining the public bank that was discussed earlier?
We have not. I'm, I'm in process of sharing that with our staff to look into. So we will definitely get some information back on the opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll close the Good of the City public comment portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the consent calendar. I think I'm supposed to read this. So consent calendar items are considered by, to be routine by the city council and would be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Are there any items that council members would like to pull? I'm going to ask to pull 7-4, police fleet vehicle purchase. Are there any items that the members, members of the public would like to pull for discussion? So I pulled 7-4 just to really say thank you to staff for continuing to look at how to make our police vehicles more sustainable. I believe that purchasing these three hybrid vehicles is a step in the right direction and appropriate purchase for our patrol officers. In speaking with staff, though, I would encourage us as a community and staff to continue to look and explore for other ways for us on maybe the non-essential vehicles, to continue to look at opportunities for EVs. I understand that part of the potential issues with both plug-in hybrids and EVs currently is that City Hall is not quite equipped for that. And so as the EBCE, East Bay Community Electric, study continues, and as we get to understand from them our opportunities as community to install solar panels and battery backups, that I hope that that would be an additional consideration. And I do believe that this is something that has been both brought up at Climate Action several times and by members of the public as something to continue to look forward to as we move forward. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I'm Nick Peterson. I'm a founding member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. I also sat on the Albany Climate Action Committee for several years. The city did, staff did bring before us about a year and a half ago their tenure plan for city fleet conversion, and stated that safety, health and safety vehicles would be excluded, of which the police cars were considered. I'd like to kick back against that, and I agree with what council member Mickey has said. Actually, these cruisers that are from Ford, actually, they're kind of gas hogs. The hybrid is a bit of a greenwash, in my opinion. They get 23 miles per gallon. They're really not an appropriate vehicle for an advanced city like Albany. There are several police agencies that have adopted electric vehicles, have done pilot programs, and I think it's time for Albany now to do a pilot program on this. I think it was about a few years ago, we spent another over 200,000 on two or three of these big gas hogs, and now we're doing it again. And when I drive by Albany Police Parking and I see all these SUVs parked out there, it just doesn't present to me what I think my city should be doing. I would love to work and, and members of Albany Climate Action Coalition would love to work with the police department, bring forward to them information about the successes that other cities, including Fremont, have had with using electric vehicles for police cars. I'm very happy with them. The whole issue of infrastructure for charging is actually bogus because you can get 300 miles on them from just a 22-volt, 220-volt circuit, which is very easy to install, probably only costs a thousand dollars or something, which is peanuts when it comes down it. And these vehicles save a lot of money on, on maintenance and fuel. They have literally virtually no maintenance issues. So it's always a big money sink with these gas-powered vehicles, keeping them tuned up, keeping them running. It's very demanding how they're run. They idle around, they stop-start, they do a lot of city driving. So it's really not very efficient. And I think the image of these big cruisers aren't really in keeping with what we see as a, a public safety image that the police could project to our community. You see a lot of electric vehicles out there. I think Albany has a very high percentage of electric vehicle ownership among the population. And I think that the city needs to help lead on this and show an example. So I know it's not possible to do now, but when this comes up again, it seems to come up every couple of years, we need to go electric, and we need to at least have a pilot program. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And apologize, I will apologize for jumping ahead of public comment. Any other comments? Go ahead, council member.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for raising this. I think the, I mean, certainly while electric vehicles be preferable, going to hybrid will deal with a lot of the stop-start that these vehicles have as a part of their mission. And I don't think vehicles were requisitioned two years ago. I know it came up, and that did not occur, so I just wanted to, I see the city manager confirming my memory. So I just wanted to put that out there, so this is not a purchase on top of a recent purchase. This is the first purchase, I don't know how long, but longer than two or three years.
Yeah, at least those two years. The last purchase was several years back at this point. And I want to reiterate that our police chief is looking into all opportunities. That is not off the table. It's that we need to analyze it and how it works best for Albany.
Thank you. And thank you. I also want to recognize the commenter's service. I think it was more than a few years on the Climate Action Committee, so thanks so much.
I had a quick question. For the city manager, could I look in at the attachment for 7-4, item 7-4? And I see that Reach Patrol vehicles are currently available through our vehicle vendor, Folsom Lake Ford, under the respective state contract. Did that imply that that's, that we are limited only to that vendor?
No, it's that that vendor provides a, basically a subsidized price as part of that state agreement. So it's typically more affordable than we would get otherwise.
Any other comments? Seeing no other comments. City clerk, can we?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. It's okay. No problem.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It looks like the next item on our agenda is new business. And so we'll move on to 11-1, request for proposals for consulting services for a street tree mass management plan.
Good evening, council. Jeff Bond, the Community Development Director. I'm going to do a brief introduction and then turn it over to my colleague Natasha Gallatin. Natasha, I wanted, the introduction I wanted to do is a little bit about the program that Natasha's part of, since it may be new to some council members. For the last seven or eight years, we've been part of what's called the Civic Spark Program. It comes out of the nonprofit group called the Local Government Commission. And basically, the program is for recent college graduates who are interested in a profession in the sustainability field. It gives them an opportunity to work in a municipal government for a year or two in getting hands-on to policies and programs. And we've been doing it for seven or eight years. Natasha is our current Civic Spark fellow, and she's been working particularly on the Street Tree Master Plan. Well, I shouldn't say just Street Tree Master Plan, a number of other items as well, but this is one of her areas of interest. So I've invited Natasha to make that presentation to you this evening. My colleagues, Mark Hurley was here a second ago. And our urban forester, John Hawkridge, is here to help answer questions as well. And Natasha, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you so much. I feel like I can never do my introductions as well as Director Bond, so thank you so much again. Well, hello, everyone. Hello, council members, vice mayor, city staff, and the public. Today, I'll be giving an overview presentation on the request for proposals for consulting services for the Street Tree Management Plan. And I know that we've gone under some iterations of the name change, but we would be more than happy to address that at the end as well. And I can go to the next slide. So the Street Tree Management Plan, and I may refer to this as the STMP, just because it's quite the mouthful. It's been identified as a planning priority action item by a handful of city plans, notably the city's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which was unanimous- the city's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which was unanimously adopted by city council in late December of 20, no, late December doesn't, December of 2019, so late 2019. And ultimately, for this project, we are looking to modernize the existing street tree policy and ordinance that's currently housed in the municipal code, because currently the municipal code outlines street tree maintenance responsibility for the fronting property owner, and essentially, they have responsibility to ensure that the tree is not under a dangerous condition, so that users of the sidewalk and street are able to use it safely. So ultimately, we're also looking to gather community feedback and to develop a more comprehensive vision for the street tree planting program as well. And additionally, there's a little bit of area of confusion when it comes to the property owner responsibility. For example, most of the routine and major maintenance ultimately happens within Public Works, especially done by the one-city arborist, Mr. Hawcridge, but ultimately, the code, the policy outlines property owner responsibility. So I think there's a little bit of area that needs to be addressed right off the bat. But on top of that, next slide, please, thank you. To provide a little bit of background for the big project that we're working on, we decided to split it up into two phases. The second phase is what this RFP is soliciting proposals for, the development of the planning document itself. But we also brought forward a contract for street tree inventory in November of last year. So I just wanted to make the distinction that the inventory process is not part of this RFP, but was an RFP that was issued last summer, and now we have a firm. The firm is Arbor Pro, and they're currently about three-fourths of the way complete with the inventory process. So hopefully, by the time that we get around to selecting a consultant, that inventory should be complete, and more so, that inventory will be a really important tool for the consultant because it'll identify areas of the city that are currently lacking in tree canopy and also address any barriers to planting in those areas. So I think it will be a good tool for the consultant for outreach purposes, for policy development. Overall, it'll be a really great instrument, and yeah, we're currently in the works with that. We're ramping that one up real quick. So this slide is a screenshot of the database that Arbor Pro has provided us and Public Works staff. But ultimately, this may be adapted into a community viewer for the public to interact with, learn more characteristics about the trees in their neighborhoods, such as like the species, and yeah, ultimately, it'll be an aerial view, it'll be a map, and they can kind of interact with it as they wish. Next slide, please. All right, and last bit of background, I just wanted to highlight three plan examples from our neighboring jurisdictions. I think these three plans exemplify a really strong policy framework that was driven by community values and priorities. So they have a great section on how they went about outreach. They also are stylistic differently. They're stylistically different as well, which also helped shape our RFP, in which we provided some guiding language for the potential consultants that want to propose, or yeah, propose, but ultimately, without dictating the methodology of how they like to go about this planning process. So I also wanted to highlight San Francisco's urban plan in particular, because they also tackled the confusion between maintenance responsibility, like right off the bat. And one of the recommendations that they have for their plan is a 100% maintenance shift from private property to their Department of Public Works, because kind of a background, it was during their recession, and the Public Works budget was diminishing, and ultimately, maintenance for their street tree program had to be cut as well. And when they went, when they went about preparing this document, they received a recommendation from their consultants that this is a priority because sparsely managed street trees by public property or private property owners versus the public, just the lack of cohesiveness and the consistency just was no bueno, for lack of better words. And so they recommended that they shift the maintenance and also provide a funding mechanism and a bunch of other structures that we are also hoping to ask the consultant to help us recommend. And wow, the rain is really coming down. All right, next slide, please. It's really loud. Gosh.
If you're surprised, I'm already. You're a little longer than I am. Should we talk?
I know, for a minute I thought something was going to cave in. But in the previous slide, I also mentioned Alameda's Master Street Plan, which was adopted in 2014. They're currently in the process of updating it, and they released an RFP about six months ago, and so their RFP was also a great model and template for our RFP. So we derived some of the language from theirs, and I'll go ahead and dive into more of that language. So first, we would ask the consultant to review and assess all relevant materials, so that would include interviews with city staff, other relevant stakeholders, identify any ongoing and planned city projects, so such as the street lighting evaluation. There should be collaboration between those separate projects, so identify opportunities for collaboration, and ultimately, to get a lay of the land and assess where are the opportunities to improve, what are the challenges, bless you, and so, so on and so forth. So we're also asking the consultant to support a robust community outreach and stakeholder engagement process, especially as it relates to ongoing public education and incentivizing residents to plant and take care of street trees because of possible liability issues that, again, hoping this plan would hatch out. And ultimately, we, again, using the inventory, we are hoping to do priority or priority targeted outreach to those neighborhoods that feature low or no canopy, and kind of working with the residents there, possibly doing community listening sessions and just doing more targeted outreach potentially. Additionally, to also identify just any physical constraints in their hardscape that would, yeah, not allow for any additional planting, which would not meet the goals of increasing the canopy in the city. And next slide, please. And next, this is something that was pulled from the RFP from Alameda. I thought it was really important, but to recommend a budget and a staffing structure to meet the desired level of service, including ongoing maintenance. That's a critical piece. And also, the funding mechanism, funding mechanism to support and sustain the expanded, expanded street tree program. So again, the ongoing maintenance and also ongoing public education for residents as well. And lastly, one of the key points would be the recommendations for stre, for street, for tree species that are suitable for the evolving climate and also for Albany's specific local context. So Albany features really narrow planting strips, among other things, so addressing those constraints and, yeah, species that also, when they reach their most mature height, these planting spaces may not be able to take care and sustain the large tree, so all of these considerations. And additionally, we're seeking best practices in urban forestry management, so this is also planting, care, removals as well. And under removals, we're seeking guidelines that help us with the removals of not only the unhealthy, dead, diseased trees, but also trees that are deemed necessary to remove for development or any infrastructure damages, among other things. Next slide, please. All right, so for next step, after this slide, we are more than happy to take questions, any feedback, and any sort of major policy issues down the road. Council may suggest a study, is this called, yes, a study session. And ultimately, if council may decide to authorize the release of this RFP, this would be shortly going out the week following, and we would anticipate having a timeline for proposals to come in a month later, so about maybe four to six weeks out for the deadline. And I don't, yeah, I think that is all on my end. Yeah, happy to answer any questions, or if Director Bond or Mr. Hawcridge have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you for presenting, Natasha.
Thank you so much.
Council members, any questions for Natasha?
Thank you for interning with Albany.
Oh, yes. Apologies, let me run and get my.
Okay, sure.
I just need to take down.
No problem, yeah, of course. So it's right in the name, this is about street trees. I'm curious if there was thought given to including the entirety of the urban forest, so which would include, I guess, city parks and things like that as well, or is that covered in the Parks Master Plan or?
I can take a shot at answering your question. We certainly talked about it. Parks are one thing, and then private trees are another thing. So with respect to parks, our feeling is that the, the planning for trees within the parks really ought to be done within the context of the function of the park. And it's probably a different skill set, certainly would need some arborist expertise, but a different skill set to look at that more holistically. So that, that's the park situation. With private trees, it's, again, a different skill set, because it's not something that the city is responsible for managing. Many cities do have regulations on the books to, to require permits and so forth for private trees, or at least certain types of private trees. My experience with those is most of those ordinances don't work very well, that they're very difficult to enforce, they're not honored very carefully, and typically, the practice is people don't get a permit, we get a desperate call at 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning from somebody saying, "My neighbor is cutting down their tree." By the time we get there, it's too late. So I'm reluctant to recommend that program right now. We can certainly discuss that if that's the council's wish. But for both of those examples, we feel those are different skill sets with different, in terms of consultants, different qualifications that we want to have, that, that for the street trees is, is someone who's really focused in on city management of street trees and being creative about that.
Great, yeah, and I, questions can sometimes implicate, imply an agenda. I had no agenda, I just was curious. Thanks.
I just want to say, I think that was a wonderful presentation. I love the fact that you took some of the past other programs and worked that together to try to find some really best practices through that. So, thank you.
So I have a, not exactly the same question as council member Jordan's, but I found it interesting that San Francisco calls it an urban forestry plan. Does that imply that, does the San Francisco plan go beyond street trees? Does it include trees on private property as well?
Yeah, so the city of San Francisco began the, their urban forest plan with the anticipation of phasing in private property and trees and parks in open space. I believe currently, those two phases are in probably just the discussion phase at their council, not even their council, maybe like a commission level. But to my knowledge, no work has been started with those phases, but it was a consideration. The, the urban forest plan for San Francisco is currently with street trees. Their primary document was all about street trees, and yeah, they had the consideration of having multiple parts afterwards, just not quite yet.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, I'll open it up for public comment.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Jeremiah here. I just had a couple questions. So when a, when a street tree is planted, potentially, does it have to be, does it have to grow into a mature 100-foot tall tree, or could it end up being a smaller tree? Regarding that question, is what species, because I think the purpose of planting trees is to reduce the CO2 levels, also to beautify the area and give birds somewhere to nest, but what species of tree reduces the carbon CO2 the most? And then also, on the street trees, I just had this thought, it's always been, you know, private property and public works getting involved, but what about PG&E? I know a lot of street trees, PG&E might come in there and prune a tree without consulting our arborists, and it may do some damage to the canopy, it may do, it may cut too many branches, which makes the tree, you know, go into shock or something. So just, I just wanted to remind everybody that maybe we can include PG&E into this somehow, because they, they do possibly prune trees without us knowing about it. And maybe, maybe PG&E has some resources, maybe PG&E might have some funding available for this, you know? But I just want to just, you know, remind everybody possibly some interest in PG&E.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for presenting this report. I think it kind of came out of Climate Action Committee, too, where it is a climate action to improve the tree canopy in Albany for sequestration of carbon and also for shading with increased heat coming up. So I know this is a real critical one. I also want to just say that the Civic Spark Program has been amazing for the city of Albany. We get these really talented, young interns, sometimes they become our employees and move up with our staff, and it's a great program. I really think everyone should make themselves aware of it and, and make sure that it keeps continuing, because we certainly have benefited from it. I also wanted to thank council member Jordan for his past efforts in reducing the fee for street tree planting, and this was really instrumental in getting more trees out there and planted. One thing, as a member of Albany Climate Action Coalition, we have a real strong interest, what Jeremiah brought up, was getting the appropriate trees that will do the most sequestration, the most shading, and be appropriate for where they are with utilities above and all sorts of things. It's a big task, and we need this plan to do that. But if we want these trees to be effective, they have to be in the ground really pretty much now, because they're going to take 10 years to reach any kind of size. So expediting this along would be really great, maybe taking the effort for climate-related street tree implementation ahead of everything, or prioritizing that would be great. So thank you very much, and excellent work. I really enjoyed seeing that.
Thank you for your comments. Before we go to council questions, can I ask staff to, maybe some follow-up on some of the questions that were asked? So, let's see, in terms of the growth of the trees or the species, is that something that's expected to come out of the, of the plan, or is that something that we have previous studies?
I think I can answer some of those questions. Species selection depends on a lot of factors, including, as Natasha mentioned, the size of the planting area, planting strips. We have lots of 27-inch-wide planting strips, which doesn't support a large variety of tree species. So, so yeah, we'll have some smaller trees planted. As far as carbon sequestration, again, it depends on what we, what we can fit in, in a planting area. Right now, we have a tree list, we have certain characteristics spelled out on the tree list as far as the size of the planting strip, deciduous evergreen, whatever, and I work with the property owner to decide which we think would work best there. That could probably be improved a little bit, but it's, you know, again, we're kind of limited in what we can do. Other?
There was one other question about coordination with PG&E?
Yeah, that's, actually, PG&E does notify me when they're doing pruning, or they're, they're supposed to. Sometimes they, they skip it, but I'll get a list, I'll go out and look at every tree that they list, and I try to push back on some of these trees that I think don't need to be pruned. Basically, PG&E is required by the California Public Utilities Commission to keep trees from getting within keep trees from getting within 18 inches of high-voltage power lines. And that's all they're required to do. So that's why you'll see trees carved out, looking bizarre, stubs left, not too much, they're not paying too much attention to the aesthetic of the tree. They just do what they need to do, because they're required to do that, and it's for safety reasons. So we don't have outages. We don't have fires. We don't have electrocutions. So as far as working with them, we do as much as we can. But I don't know if that's something that needs, that would be incorporated into our plan. It may be mentioned in our, in our plan, but PG&E does what PG&E does. Any?
I think that was, that was it for the questions from the public. Discussion by council?
Sure. Excited this is here. Is there, I see that the timeline that the consultant proposes is one of the merit criteria. I don't know if it'd be appropriate to indicate, well, it depends upon the council's wishes, but my desire is to have this done in time to support the design of an issue, a ballot measure for 2024. So that we can get this going and get it funded and get it going. So I don't know, again, if that would be appropriate to make some mention of that in the RFP or not. If you think that's an appropriate timeline.
Well, I think it's for the council to, to tell us, but I think that would give us, if we go out now and we get somebody under contract in, say, three or four months, that gives us about a year to do this. That's a pretty quick planning process by Albany standards. So that might be a little bit faster pace than what some member, you know, some we might be happy with in terms of community engagement. I'm sure the technical work can be done. It's, it's the, it's the community engagement, and how many times do we come, how many times do we interact with, with people, you know, coming back with drafts and so on and so forth? But, you know, in some respects, having a hard deadline is, is, helps us. Because otherwise, it can just go on and on and on. And, and sometimes that's okay, because it's controversial, and we just need to work through it as a community. Other times, I'd like to move on to the next thing. You, you tell us on this one.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I ask because I defer to professional expertise. If that's too fast, I don't want to get the suggestion of the council that it, ask for an impossible mission. So hearing that it's, it's possible, it'd be a push, but there's some advantage to that push. Because one of my hopes for 2024 is that the sidewalk repair program will have largely completed repairing the worst locations by then. That was a 10-year tax. I don't know what the last actual tax collection year would be. It was passed in 2016. The first collection year was 17, 18. But it would be nice not to wait until 2026 to go back to reauthorize it, because that might potentially result in a gap. And in any case, I think the need will have reduced then. So one concept was to go back for reauthorization with expanding the scope of what the money can be spent on to include street trees and urban forestry. But in order to do that, we would need to have a plan. In that regard, the, the RFP, I think it's appropriately agnostic on what, what the program would be that comes out of this, but I'm certainly in support of the, I guess, the San Francisco model, as you put it, where the city won't surprise people, because that's what I've been pursuing with sidewalks as well, where the city, again, takes responsibility for the street trees, which also means it's going to plant trees. It's not necessarily up to the adjacent property owner, which I think is the only way to, to get to the canopy that we need. I don't think we can really wait on the discretion of the adjacent property owner. And I think the city needs to water the trees so they all survive or have a much better chance of surviving, rather than relying on the adjacent property owner. But I know that'll come out of the process, but that's, that's my, where I'm headed, to have the city take responsibility for its property. Yeah.
Putting me in a situation that I kind of want another council member to talk before I follow up on your comments there, so I can process a little more, but I'm desperately looking at my other council members for comments.
I'll, I'll speak, so you could process. I just want to say, thank, thank you for that presentation as an environmentalist and ecologist who worked at the intersections of climate policy and social equity. I'm trying to contain my excitement that I get to have a part in this decision-making process. But I do want to acknowledge, you know, my hometown of Richmond, and for you pointing out the, some of the positive that comes out of that community. But I would just also like to share and highlight that, that had resulted in some spaces that are more or less reduced or rendered as the hood to become like these beautiful green spaces. And to me, it's just the most beautiful thing to, you know, see something like the little homies that I rock with sometimes, and they say, they tell me, "That's my tree," because they helped plant it. And so I, I would hope that our request that goes out to potential consultants highlights quite explicitly the need for solid community engagement and outreach. Something as simple as making our GIS story map goes a long way in which people can interact with. If you don't know what I'm referring to or what that is, it's just a little nice fancy map where you could, you have all your points and location, gives you all the information. But for someone who does that type of work, it's really simple to make that. And when you look at it on a computer screen, you might think, "Oh, this is a lot. This is, how does someone do that? What kind of code are they writing?" Very, very little of that. And I'm only saying that because it's such low-hanging fruit that a potential consultant can take on. I would also like to see that we, that we have something in there that also acknowledges the diversity of our community. Gets very, there's a misperception that Albany is a middle-class, income-and-hire, all-white. And I think we all understand and recognize it's not, it's not that. And that there are a lot of folks in this community where English is not their first language. So making sure that any material that goes out to the public is accessible as well. And that made a big difference in, in Richmond. And it just makes a big difference in general whenever we're doing any type of outreach and engagement. I'll leave it at that for now.
I just have one quick question. When you mentioned the timeline being really tight, what, what potentially would be a more comfortable timeline? Or realistic?
If you were to, to kind of reframe your question, if, if you were to ask me, just, you know, under normal circumstances, how long would this take? I would say probably more like a year and a half, which would get us towards the end of 2024, which would be too late for you to use as a, as a decision-making tool in the ballot decision, which is what in July you have to decide, or August you have to decide that. So it, it, it's not impossible. I think the two consequences would be, we'd probably cut back a little bit on some of the, both the technical analysis and the community engagement, and have to be a little bit more disciplined about that. And, and then we would ask, you know, kind of, you might find yourselves in a situation, we bring something to you, if, well, if you, you want to use this, at least in draft form, you, you need to give us feedback quickly. And not that you don't, but sometimes in, in studies, we kind of go around a few times. I'm not, not critical of that. I think you get a lot of value by, by looking at it two or three times, but might not have an opportunity to do that. The good news is, like I said, by compacting it, it's, limiting the time, it'll be a little bit more cost-effective, and it, it, by finishing it sooner rather than later, it will free us up to do other things.
And could we potentially use some community volunteers to maybe help with the community outreach and lighten the load of?
Always open to those ideas. I think we, we want our consultant team to take the lead. They're, they're the technical experts. So I think using volunteers, we can have a much more effective outreach. And, and through volunteers, get to more people. I'm not sure it would speed up the process. And it might actually be more to manage. So we'd, we'd love to do it, but I'm not sure it would speed up the process any.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to thank my fellow council members for giving me a little time to process a few things. You know, I'm, I'm really intrigued. I, I don't think I did the math, thinking 2024 for a ballot initiative. And part of me thinks a little bit about what the RFP is actually asking for. And so when I first heard about the management plan, I'm a urban designer, planner, so I think physical things. I'm thinking like, it's going to tell us, "This tree should be planted on this block, and this tree should be planted on that block." And thankfully, that's not actually what this document is or asking for. It's actually really asking for policies and approaches that we can use in our decision-making to help inform what's the best tree to plant, what are the things that we can do. But what I think I'm trying to reckon with is really for the ballot initiative, the ballot initiative is really asking, does the community support the city taking over the maintenance of trees? Which in reality is not the main goal of the management plan. And so if the discussion about what does it mean for the city to maintain the trees, what are the cost estimates for that? If that were actually a very early deliverable that council could adopt prior to have finalizing the exact policies, then we would be in a situation where we can take a year and a half to pass the entire document, but we'll be in a position to be, if we feel it's appropriate, go ahead and, and put a ballot initiative up for the voters to vote on. So I'm not making a motion on that part yet, because I have other comments, but I, I needed to process a little bit about what both of you were saying, because I honestly have been thinking 2026 for a variety of other reasons. But it is interesting to think that if we didn't pass something in 2026, that there would be a break in funding to prepare our sidewalks and/or do other things. So if we don't get it in 2024, we can always try again in 2026. I did have some other comments for staff. I love that the document speaks to our street lighting, lighting study. I had originally hoped that we would be well under the way in doing the active transportation plan as well, or at least have started that. Given recent council meetings, I, I have a sense that we have a couple of other things we have to finish before 2025, at the end of 2025. So I'm not sure when the active transportation plan will come up in front of us. And I raise that because we, as a community, have taken on many things that have to do with our streets. And we are, I think, appropriately doing them at one at a time, both because of our staffing and our funding. However, the reality is our street light study, our street tree management plan, our active transportation plan, all of these things really are interlocked. And so one of the things I noted in the staff report, I was really excited reading the staff report, it talks about many of the above-ground and underground constraints for, for street trees. It is not in the RFP, and I only raise that because, as a consultant, we absolutely always read the RFP, and we try and watch as many of the sessions that discuss these things. Sometimes, I'll be honest, we don't read the staff report that went to council. And what I say, it's the second paragraph in the staff report, it discusses a whole series of things, bike racks, EV charging, that I just want to make sure the consultant who is submitting is 100% aware that this is something that we are very keen-eyed and, and want to understand implications of. My guess is these consultants are professionals, and they would consider those things anyways. But the more you actually have in your RFP clearly explaining what you expect in the outcome, I think is beneficial. And so I would ask that we consider carrying forward that second paragraph from the discussion in the staff report. In that same vein, a couple of comments have come up about the narrow planters. And this is, in particular for me, an important thing. You know, 27 inches was mentioned. I walk on a lot of streets where it's 18 inches, right? And, and I'm amazed that the trees are actually alive. And I recognize that in the community, we can't move our curbs everywhere to give our trees more room to grow. But I also recognize, as we do the street study, we might realize that in certain locations, we want to do, we want to move the curb, or we want to do a flow-through plan, or something that will give the trees and the street tree, streetlights more space. That for active transportation purposes, it might be something that actually helps us slow down traffic. And so that combines it with traffic calming. And so, again, that is one of many of the reasons why I'm really excited about this program, and I'm hoping that the policies we see come out of it say, "Here's what we can do with the limitations that we have today. And here's a not super-expensive way of giving the tree more room." And then, you know, we win mega millions, and it's a billion-dollar one, and we put all that money into our streets. Last estimate I heard was it's something like a million dollars a block to really rebuild a street. And that was, when I heard that number, that was in 2006. So I get that these are very expensive things, but I think there's ways incrementally both help our urban forestry and deal with a lot of the issues that we all as a community want to address. I think those are, yeah. So those were kind of my thoughts about the street tree management plan. Any other comments? Any discussion on random things that I brought up?
No, I appreciate your background and expertise on, to give, give more information. So.
Yeah, well, for one of the reasons I'm, I'm anxious to get this done, although we aren't experiencing it this winter, as a geologist, I, of course, looked at the temperature record for the area. The meteorological station for Berkeley has measurements going back to 1890. For the first century, the average maximum daytime temperature went up one degree, and there were no 100-degree days. Occasionally, there was a year with a 90-degree day, and this, this is at the Berkeley Station, not, not at Albany, but it's the closest station of that long a record. Since 1990, the maximum daytime temperature on an annual basis has gone up five degrees. It's showing no sign of a fading. It's over 70 degrees now. And most years have days over 90 degrees, and we started to get days with over 100 degrees. This comports with research regarding the coastal areas of California having more severe climate change than the inland areas, because we have a marine layer, fog and/or overcast, and that is evaporating off closer and closer to the coast. The people I talked to who've lived in Albany their whole life and who are over 60 or 70 talk about the fog that used to be here all summer long, and there's almost no fog in the summer, in my experience now. So I'm quite anxious to get these, these trees in the ground. And in that regard, the, the idea of staging the, the work so that we look at the, the maintenance and what would it cost for the city to actually, I'm not going to say be responsible for maintenance, but do maintenance more, more so, following the, following the sidewalks, and the adjacent property owners are still legally responsible for repairing sidewalks, with the city stepping in and, and doing it on a one-off basis. Unlike sidewalks, we don't have street trees in a lot of areas. And so that's a capital cost to get those in the ground, rather than a maintenance cost, ongoing maintenance cost. So I guess there's a discussion whether there could be a bond measure to pay for that. Either way, I think knowing what that cost is in designing a measure for 2024, would we be needed rather than not? Because it may be that the, the cost is low enough relative to how many trees we want to plant each year, given bandwidth and not ending up with uniform-aged forests, which we've been dealing with, the ramifications of that politically, you know, 50 years later with trees aging out all at once, and neighborhoods understandably being consternated by that. So it might be that it's something that actually, even though it's a capital cost, we want to roll it into this, this measure and do another 10-year measure. Because again, after 10 years, that capital cost will have been born, and whoever's on council 10 years from then might want to do a, a smaller measure, because that, that portion of it's taken care of by then. As far as, I'll note on the, the curb item, and thank you for raising that, making more space for trees, the sidewalk repair phase seven includes removing curbs in a few locations. for trees, the sidewalk repair phase seven includes removing curbs in a few locations or moving curbs out into the street to provide more space. So I think we'll get some good information from that. I was really thankful and excited that staff brought that to us, something I've dreamed about but never brought up. So I really appreciate that. And we'll get a chance to see how that goes next winter, since that will be built, probably beyond what we want to have the consultant do, but actually maybe not that hard, depending upon what kind of GIS data is available to assess, you know, where are the locations where there's a parking space and a half for a vehicle, such that the half-space, you could move the curb out without losing a parking space. So find those opportunities and at least have something, some analysis in the document, some comment in the plan to either look at that or have that as an opportunity as a policy to look at in the future. Yeah, and then this is, I noticed in the language of the RFP, under Equity and Environmental Justice, it says, "The STMP should not exacerbate existing inequities in canopy coverage." I would like to see that changed to, should reduce inequity or even eliminate inequity. I don't think it's enough not to exacerbate it, because certainly when I walk around Albany, it's pretty clear there's substantial variation in tree canopy that seems to correlate with income or anti-correlate with income. So I would say that needs to be more than just not exacerbate. Thanks.
Just one last thing on my end, just thinking the potentiality of this council moving likely to direct staff to issue out the, or release the RFP. Also just taking into consideration when we hit that stop to include the Climate Action Committee in the process, similar to what we had the SEJC do with the racial equity survey proposals. I think it'd be very, very, very solid and dope on our part to have input from the Climate Action Committee and ensure that those respective voices from our community of volunteers can also make sure that whatever decisions we make in regard to these proposals see their way through, at least through whatever council makes.
I'll entertain any motions anyone wants to make. I'm seeing no other, no further discussion, I guess.
Yes, with that, I will move approval to release the RFP with the single wording adjustment.
I second.
Can I offer a friendly amendment? I would request that we include the second paragraph under the staff discussion, staff report discussion about that explicitly listed out other considerations when evaluating the street trees.
Accepted, thanks.
Do I second that now?
I think you have to accept as well.
Discussion? So I will, so there was a discussion about timing. And so I noticed that Councilmember Jordan, you did not modify the timing of the contract nor give any direction on timing of costs.
Yeah, well, I think there is a metric in the RFP already on the timeline. I guess I could make an amendment to add that at staff's discretion, I could add mention of the specific interest in timing the plan so that it could tie into a potential 2024 ballot measure. But I would leave that to staff since that metric is already in there. So if you think it's useful to include.
I think it is, and then we'll do that. I think it's a good, good to at least put it out there for the consultants to respond to and in the selection process, we can, we may learn, get some good ideas from the selected consultant.
Yeah, I think I was refrained from hardwiring in there because the consultants may come back and go, no. And I don't want to constrain, ask for an RFP that has the perverse effect of constraining the consultants who respond to those who maybe are not as top of game because they look at it and go, no, we can't do that.
So that was direction to staff that is not or is, is or is not in the motion?
Is not.
Okay. That's okay. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been, wait, do we do public? No, we don't do public, or we just go straight to rural call vote? Okay. City Clerk, could we have a rural call?
Who's the second, Councilmember Lopez or Jennifer?
Well, I think I seconded the amendment. Yeah.
Oh, right. No, you seconded.
You seconded.
You need to second the amendment.
Oh, you need a...
I second.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to item 11-2, Accountability, Community Dialogue. And is there a staff report on this?
I will hand it over to Councilmember Jordan.
Sure, this was based on an email that I believe went to the entire council that was announcing this event Wednesday, which is, it says, "A community dialogue regarding accountability." And I thought it would be beneficial for the council to at least have the opportunity to discuss this. If more than two of us happen to end up there, then that could potentially represent some Brown Act issues. No, because it's publicly announced, it would not represent any Brown Act issues.
Yes, it's a, it's a public meeting of a local organization that's open to the public. The majority of you could attend.
And talk and...
Talk about what's on the agenda. Exactly.
Yeah, oh, okay. Well, then I guess we don't need to designate. My misunderstanding, I apologize. I thought that was only true of government bodies, but I guess it's all public meetings.
Another exception, I had a Brown Act training last week where we had talked about it in quite some detail, and that is another...
I've been caught out.
The Brown Act is being updated all the time.
I have a feeling that part, I can't lean on that part being updated, though.
I learned a lot, you know, I did a training, sorry, a whole discussion for later.
So I guess in that regard, I don't know if there's any need to discuss it then. I mean, that was my thought, was that we would need to designate certain people to go. But I guess any of us can go, and all of us can go.
So I will...
I guess we should make sure somebody goes, though.
Well, I will ask if there are any questions for you from council. All right, and then are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
Hey, can you hear me? Because now I just see my name.
We can hear you, Julie.
Okay, all right. It's okay, now it looks like a normal screen again. I sat through this whole meeting and discussion about trees about this, for this one item. I can't believe it's just going to go away so fast. Although I did learn a lot about trees. I just, I think it's a good idea to designate one person, and I wanted to strongly suggest it be Robin Lopez, Councilmember Lopez, to be that person. I would hate to see nobody go, and I also feel like he would be the perfect representative for the council, and he, I just, I just think that would, he would be the right person. So I think, I think it would be good. It doesn't mean you can't all show up, as you just discovered, but it would, I want to make sure there is somebody there and somebody who really, I think, can identify with the issues that are being addressed and is concerned about them in a way that I think the other council members aren't as concerned. So that's my comment, after all that tree information. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. No further public comment, discussion by President, actually, sorry, if I could say one thing.
Sure, oh, yeah.
So I'm going to apologize, Mayor Tiedemann is not available, and on Wednesday, he was invited to the Alameda County Mayor's Meeting Conference Dinner, not sure exactly what the title was, but I will be attending in his stead. And so I will unfortunately not be available on Wednesday evening. So I do think it actually is very appropriate that you brought it up as a, and for us all discuss, because I'm not 100% certain, but it would have been a Brown Act violation for us to have discussed this offline about potentially having one or more of us attend. And so, but I unfortunately will not be available.
Thank you, yeah, and I agree with the commenter, despite my misunderstanding, the need to have this on, I think it is useful because it would be good to designate, or know at least that some of us are going to go. For myself, I'm constrained. I generally have a policy of not attending things at night and outside of work hours other than council meetings because I need to care for my wife, and it's, I prefer to care for her at night than hire care for a whole host of reasons. So that's my situation.
And unfortunately, I'm also unavailable. Not that I don't care or want to be part of this, but I'm just unfortunately unavailable to be there.
I know you all are looking at me to cause good trouble. I'm here for it. Yeah, I could certainly make myself available. Probably be the perfect way to go out with a bang before I go on a short vacation with my family, just to hear some good community voices within such space and just ground ourselves before I head out. But I'd be more than agreeable to go represent city council in that manner. I can't guarantee that I'll represent us in the best light because you know who I am.
Sell the store. Well, thank you for being available.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I guess one last comment on this item. You know, I think some of the nucleus of the reason for this meeting that's occurring on Wednesday, I had two high schoolers at the high school in the year that the events occurred, and it was, to both them and to our family, it really, I think, shook us to the core because we had a perception of Albany that was maybe idealistic, maybe naive. But given where I grew up, given in the community that I went to undergraduate, I felt that we as a family had moved to a very open and very accepting community. And I think those events really made us aware that really this is work that we as a community must continue to work at, that these are things that since that time, we have seen both in the political realm and over the last six, eight years, really the discourse has only gotten worse. And that I truly am sad that I won't be able to be there Wednesday. I had already committed to this event on Wednesday before I knew of the efforts to have this gathering. And so I am very excited and happy that Councilmember Lopez will be there, and I have no qualms about you representing yourself faithfully and representing the city council. With that, I'll close discussion on 11-2, and we'll move on to item 12, Council and Subcommittee Reports. Do we, do we have any updates, Subcommittee updates? No reports on my end?
I attended the Stop Waste meeting, and actually, I'm excited because this next meeting is in-person, and I'm going to check out the cookies. I've been, I've been promised that that's the big draw, so. But seriously, I'm really very, very impressed with all of the different presentations we've got, the different organizations, what they're really doing and rolling out, the grant programs. So I urge, you know, I urge our community and everyone else to check out and see what different opportunities and programs are available through the StopWaste.org group.
Yeah, it was amazing, amazing agency. I never actually, I think, I think it was possible to meet in person, but I never met in person, so, yeah. But they did, at all... Well, it turns out at holidays, and you may find this, having served over two holidays, I came home during the holidays about times, and there was a big box of cookies just outside the door. Somebody had left, and they were a big box and big cookies. So, yeah, they didn't last long. So let's, I attended the Alameda CTC, or Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting. I'd say the main item was that the commission voted to allocate $4 million of Measure BB funding, so this is the 1% sales tax funding for an e-bike subsidy program over the next two years. And specifically, this is funding that would go to EBCE because it is setting up a program and has allocated $4 million to it. So this would double the amount of funding that's available. EBC is having it designed by consultant and administered, and 40% of those funds will be dedicated to households enrolled in care. The program is both to subsidize the acquisition of e-bikes by households as well as to provide loaner bikes, so people can actually experience an e-bike and make a decision if that's something they're, they're still going further with. I also attended a budget briefing session of the Alameda County Library Advisory Commission, which was pretty fascinating, first time I've encountered any part of the county's budget. So, yeah, that was, that was quite interesting, both about the library's budget and how the library's budget fits into the county's budget. And I just want to go back just for a moment on 11 and thank the groups that are, have put together this event on Wednesday night, and recognize that the book that is coming out will be consequential for our community. And inviting the council, council to attend, because I think at the time that event happened, unless staff says otherwise, I don't think there was a lot of engagement between the city and the Board of Education, the city council, the Board of Education, the city and the school district around that. So I just want to thank those groups.
I did not end up having any commissions or committee meetings. I did attend the training for commissioners and committee members, learned a lot of new things, and taught me some things that I should have learned by reading her emails. She gave some really wonderful tips about how to easily access the attachments to the agenda. I decided to go about, just about the hardest way to get to the items. So it was really great. It was wonderful to see all the new commissioners and committee members, to see many of the longstanding members as well. And thank you both to staff for presenting and to Mala for presenting. I think it helped reinforce the things that I learned up in Sacramento about the Brown Act, and so that was a great session. I had originally only intended staying for the introduction, but staff did such a great job, I got sucked in and I stayed there, and I learned a lot. So I really appreciate all of that. Let's see, we'll move on to item 13, Future Agenda Items.
Before you do that, I just want to say I also was there, and you guys all did a wonderful job, so. Especially, you are able to rattle off that Brown Act like nobody's business. So absolute highlight of my evening. It's always good to get, you know, a little bit more information, so.
Oh, hi, it's Jeremiah here. I just noticed this is a new podium. I don't know what you do with the last one, but what a nice surprise. So there's a few things that are really important that I think the city council really does need to focus on, and first of all, maybe possibly creating a fentanyl awareness month. I know we had two different months, you know, this month, Women's and Red Cross, but somehow fentanyl awareness, I think the city council, it would be great if we started leading the way in fentanyl awareness with our community. Also, I have this, we have the Civic Spark person here, and I just want to say a future agenda item, maybe the city council can have a Civic Spark person or an intern program for the city council. I don't know, maybe a Civic Spark person for the city council as a whole, or each city council member can have their own intern. Also, the last thing I just wanted to mention is the land acknowledgement statement. It would be really nice to do something new for the Aloney Tribe, maybe putting up their flag here in the city hall or putting up the land acknowledgement statement somewhere inside this building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any future agenda items from council?
None for me.
So I do have a few, and I believe these won't be a surprise to the city manager. In reviewing the RFP that went out and then receiving additional information both from the city manager and from the city attorney, you know, as a, working for a private firm that responds to a lot of RFPs, we often respond to a lot of RFPs that have minority-owned business and/or women-owned business requirements and/or points that can help with the grading system. I was not aware of the fact that in Albany, sorry, in California, there's a Proposition 209 that actually does not permit us to include that in the evaluation unless federal funds stipulate such inclusion, and so that was honestly, to me, a rather large shock that a law that was, sorry, a proposition that was passed in 1996 is something that is limbing us in such a way. And I would ask that if we could have a future agenda item to discuss other ways in which we can encourage in our RFPs the inclusion of minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. We spend a lot of time as council members thinking about DEIB issues and how we can address it in terms of housing, in terms of street trees. Another way that we can do this is in the way that we as a community spend our money. Now, I recognize there are limitations that 209 places on us. However, including statements in RFPs saying that we are open to and would accept proposals that maybe are, that we are open to minority businesses applying and women-owned businesses applying and small businesses applying, but there were also, what I have seen often in some contracts, language to the extent of saying something to the extent of, you know, and most contracts say, most RFPs say, you know, your proposal doesn't have to match exactly what we say. Some contracts will say things to, as a minority-owned business or as a women-owned business, you do not need to apply for the entirety of the contract, and so one can submit, if you are focused on a particular element of the overall scope, that you can apply. I will tell you, I think that is a way of us, sorry, I'm getting a little bit into the discussion, so I'd love for us to be able to have a conversation about that as a group, about how we can be more open to supporting these businesses within the purview of what Proposition 209 says, which I will save some of my dialogue about issues I find with that, perhaps for not being on the dais, maybe over some beer, with only one of you, I guess. But I would love for us to be able to have that conversation because as much as we as a community can do to support more housing for more people and be inclusive, we also have to think about our businesses, and this is one of the things that I truly appreciate that the city manager and staff has done in terms of response to the recent vandalism burglaries, that we are working with our local businesses, which are both local, small businesses, minority-owned businesses, sometimes women-owned businesses. We have something really special here in Albany, and I want to make sure that we continue to, where we spend our money, help support the things that we all stand for.
I absolutely support that, so.
I don't know on future agenda items, is that something we vote on or is that something we just, okay, sorry, I'm learning, I'm learning.
Yeah, so you just, just let Mayor Tiedemann know, and by our charter, it will appear on the agenda. All council members have access to putting things on the agenda.
All right. And with that, with no other comments, I think, does that mean...
I will offer an anecdote on 209.
Yep.
Which is, that was the first time I was motivated to get over my shyness and canvassed door to door shortly after I moved to Albany, trying to oppose it, obviously, as a wee, wee little person and unsuccessfully so, and we still suffer from it, so thank you for focusing on that.
And with that, I will, what is the phrase, adjourn the meeting? I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.